You're good to go.
Good morning. On behalf of the Planning Commission, I'd like to humbly recognize that we are gathered on indigenous land, the traditional ancestral and unceded territories of the Coast Salish peoples. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial. We acknowledge the role that traditional Western-centric planning practices have played in harming, displacing, and attempting to erase Native communities, and we respect indigenous rights to sovereignty and self-determination. We commit to being better listeners, learners, and to lifting indigenous voices. We also commit to identifying racist practices, to practice allyship, and strive to center restorative land stewardship rather than unsustainable and extractive use of the land. So, good morning again, and welcome. As always, all Planning Commission meetings are open to the public, but do note the Planning Commission does not hold public hearings because the Commission is an advisory body. We provide recommendations to elected leaders who in turn make the actual decisions. We do encourage individuals and organizations to provide their comments to elected officials as appropriate. This meeting is a hybrid meeting. Some of us are participating remotely, and others are participating in person in the boards and commission room at Seattle City Hall. We follow some brave space norms, color brave space norms. And in advance of today's discussion, I'd like someone to volunteer to choose one. And since we're talking about recruitment today, maybe think about that in terms of the one you choose, and if you wouldn't mind maybe giving a thought as to how the one you choose might relate to our discussion about recruiting additional members to the Commission. I'd love a volunteer. If not, I'll just choose one of your lovely faces. Thank you, Caleb.
Yeah, no problem. I would like to highlight "Put Relationships First, Build Community, and Racialize Trust and Care."
That's a very good one to choose for today. Thank you so much. If there are no amendments or modifications to these norms, I suggest that we all agree to them. Hearing none, we will agree to them. So today on our agenda, we'll discuss the process and considerations of filling upcoming vacancies on the Commission. And then we'll receive a briefing from the Office of Economic Development on the work of their office. First up, though, we need to approve minutes from our last meeting of December 14th, 2023. I would love to entertain a motion and a second to approve the minutes, and then we'll discuss any changes or amendments. You hear a motion? Thank you. Michaela?
Nick, seconds.
Thank you, Nick. Are there any amendments or changes to the minutes to discuss? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? A universal acclaim. Oh, Julio was abstaining? Or just voting yes?
No, I'm voting yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, that it is unanimous acclaim. Great. So, the next Housing and Neighborhoods Committee meeting is on Thursday, February 1st. That's next Thursday from 7:30 to 9:00. And that meeting will be held online using the MS Teams platform, as all of our 7:30 a.m. committee meetings are. And our next full Commission meeting is scheduled for Thursday, February 8th. And that's a 3 o'clock meeting from 3:00 to 5:30. This will also be held online using the Teams platform. So that will only be online, or is that a hybrid?
The committee meetings are all online only, and the full Commission meetings are hybrid.
Okay. So the note here for the next full Commission meeting just says it'll be held online. So I just want to be clear about that.
Sorry about that, David. Thank you.
No, no problem. All right. And as noted before, this is a hybrid meeting, both in person and via Teams. And I'm going to review the format of the meeting. During the meeting, there will be opportunities for questions and comments from commissioners, and we'll use the chat function of Teams for all commissioners, whether you're present, live, or virtual like me, to join the discussion queue, including those meeting in person. I'd like to remind commissioners that the chat function is not for substantive discussion, but rather to be recognized to speak. And if you could note what the topic is you're trying to address, then maybe we can sort of help the conversation flow a little better. I will read any public comment that we've gotten emailed prior to this meeting. We will also invite members of the public present at the meeting to offer public comment. We will be taking comment at the beginning and at the end of our full Commission meetings. Don't have anyone present today, right, Vanessa?
That's correct. None emailed in, and nobody else here, no members of the public in the room.
All right. Then I will hand it over to you, our esteemed Executive Director.
Thank you, David. We are holding off on our introductions until 8 o'clock, when we are joined by OED staff, although Heidi's here with us already. So if you're wondering why we aren't doing that, we are doing it, but we're just going to do it in about 15 minutes. I'd like to remind commissioners to complete the retreat evaluation that John sent out a few days ago. Thanks for those who have responded. And then also remind commissioners, if you haven't done so already, to please submit your volunteer hours to Robin McGonigal. We use those volunteer hours to note in our annual report how many hours you all volunteered for this city and include that number to demonstrate how much hard work you all do, both in meetings and outside of meetings. And if you need a nudge, just ask. If you need to know how to do that, just email Robin, and she'll provide you with instructions on that. So I'm going to walk through the process of filling some upcoming vacancies on the Planning Commission, as well as suggest some factors that I suggest be considered as the Commission seeks to fill those vacancies. Next slide, please. We're just waiting for the technology to catch up with us. Next one, please. Thanks. So, in terms of filling our upcoming vacancies, we have one current vacancy which was held by Rocky, and that is a city council appointment. So each of you commissioners fill a specific position, position 1 through 16, that is either appointed by city council, the mayor, or forwarded by the Commission itself. All of those are subject to the full approval of city council. So Rocky's position that he has vacated is a city council appointment. David and Julio are also, will be at the end of their full, two full three-year terms. So that's six-plus years of service that, this coming spring. And then Rick Moller, also at the end of his two full three-year terms, will, his position will be vacant in the spring as well. And that is the one position that the Planning Commission forwards a recommendation for. So the announcements of vacancies will occur mid to late February. And that is an announcement that I blast out to as many people as I can think of, and I take suggestions from commissioners. I send the announcement to all city council members, to the mayor's office, to a variety of media around the city, to organizations, nonprofits, to past commissioners, and to anybody who you all may suggest I send that to. The announcement is open typically for a month. So if the announcement goes out late February, that announcement will be open, will be accepting letters of interest and resumes until end of March. We coordinate, then I coordinate with the offices of Councilmember Morales, as the new Land Use Committee Chair at City Council, as well as the mayor, to walk through the process of screening the applicants, identifying those to be interviewed, interviewing the applicants, and then forwarding on the recommendations to, in this case, city council, as all appointments are being made by city council, and of course, the Planning Commission as well. Next slide, please. So, this slide just shows the current skillsets that we have on the Commission, as well as the skillsets that we'll be losing, which sounds very dramatic, but it is kind of dramatic. So, right now, and continuing on the Commission, we have affordable housing policy expertise, architecture expertise, both public and private, biology and environmental systems, climate change and climate justice, community organization, multimodal transportation planning, planners, both-- The skillsets that we will be losing with our vacancies, as well as those that have recently left, are affordable housing advocacy, architecture from an academia standpoint, construction management, journalism, land use law, real estate developer in the residential market rate sector, and smart growth and transportation. The Planning Commission does not have specific requirements for each of the 16 positions, unlike some other commissions that, for instance, the Design Commission, each of their positions need to be filled by a specific profession, an urban planner, urban designer, architect, fine artist. For us, for the Planning Commission, we're lucky in that we need to-- our one requirement is to have somebody, either an architect, or an engineer, or an urban planner, which we will continue to have. And one of the advantages of not having to fill specific spots is that the appointing bodies, that being the mayor and city council, as well as the review committee, can take into account the current conditions, the current issues and topics that the Commission is facing, emerging issues, and really tailor the recruitment and appointment process to those areas that the Commission itself feels they could benefit from the expertise of an individual with that. Next slide, please. Something else we take into consideration are the geographic diversity of the commissioners. So you'll see on the left, a map with a little people icons showing where the continuing commissioners live, those not leaving the Commission. Once David, Rocky, and Julio and Rick leave, we will not have representation from Council Districts 6 and 7. So you'll see on the right, a map showing Councilmember 6, which is Ballard, part of Greenwood, part of Magnolia, and then Councilmember, Council District 7, which is also part of Magnolia, Queen Anne, downtown. So something, we don't need to have a commissioner. We don't need to have representation across all the districts, but it is a consideration we like to think about. Could you please go back to the previous slide, Olivia? Thank you. In terms of considerations, in addition to a diversity of skillsets, lived life experience, and where each commissioner lives, commissioners do have to reside within the city of Seattle, we also are looking for a diversity of race and ethnicity. So that's something to also take into account. What I would like to do for the next couple of minutes is to hear from you all as you're looking at this skillset. If there is a, if there is a skillset that is not noted here that you think would be beneficial in the recruitment process to be mindful of. And I'll give you all a moment to think about that. And then if you could just put your name in the chat, and I can go ahead and then call on you. So Deanna, you have some thoughts?
Yes. I was thinking that perhaps some of the skills or subject matter expertise that I think the Commission would benefit from is having the perspective of economic development, quite apropos for today's meeting, economic development and businesses. Just how so many of our policies, you know, whether it's mixed-use decisions, whether it is transportation and, you know, providing recommendations that do foster jobs and economic opportunity. I think economic development expertise would be incredible to have in the Commission. In addition, and similar to that would be demographics or geography, someone that could bring perspective of understanding the trends and how the city is evolving in terms of growth and population and dynamics. And I think that also making sure that we do have that perspective of real estate development. I think I will, even though it's already there, I do want to highly, highly emphasize because I think that is pretty much the thread of a perspective that needs to inform a lot of the decisions that we're making for the future. So I'll leave it at that.
Excellent. Thank you, Deanna. Radhika, you have a couple of thoughts?
Yeah. I wonder if this is captured in the construction management piece, but I think someone who's familiar with commercial real estate would be helpful as we think through how job centers change and the future of work and things like that. And the other piece I thought was measurement and evaluation. I think we're heading into a time when we'll have a lot of policies and impacts to evaluate. So if there's someone who has an evaluation background or a measurement background, that would be great.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you both. Any other thoughts or ideas? Michaela?
Subject matter expertise, it's kind of hard to describe or put into a clean bucket, but I think expertise around anti-displacement work and/or environmental justice. I know that we've got Jamie on the, still continuing on for now, but the environmental justice piece kind of resonates with me. And then as I was hearing about evaluation and some of the other comments about job centers, a demographer kind of came to mind for me, someone with a background in that. And then in terms of lived experience, I know that we have to be careful about like what we, what we ask applicants, but I just want to say that I think we're, in addition to looking for diversity of race and ethnicity, I think other lived experience, we're also looking for another, a wider range of lived experience, including folks with disability, people from different class backgrounds, and people of different ages. And so just encouraging the group to think about that. You know, getting a diversity of perspectives on the Commission makes us stronger. And we should think broadly about who we, how we announce these opportunities and spread the word.
Excellent. Thank you, Michaela. Jamie has suggested community development. Jamie, do you want to expand on that, or? I can't see-- There you are.
Just to say that I know that some of the topics in community development are already covered on this list, but I wanted to name it explicitly as something that's important.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Deanna, more thoughts?
Again, this is like adding perhaps a detail, but historian? You know, it can, could we bring the perspective of someone that can understand or bring to light the history of Seattle and Washington, I think would be very valuable in terms of understanding past and present decisions. And particularly the history of Indigenous people in this area would be incredibly valuable, which of course, coupled with lived experience, would be even more fantastic for the Commission. So that's kind of where-- Hearing Michaela prompted me to mention that, which has been on my mind.
Excellent. Thank you. Rather than take five minutes to brainstorm outlets, what I will do is send you all a list of the, the current list of groups, and not so much individuals, but groups that I distribute the announcement to, and would really greatly appreciate you suggesting additional groups. And as always, I'm happy to talk to people who are interested and not only referred to me by current commissioners, but if there are members of the public listening to the call and think, hmm, I'd like to know more about the Planning Commission. Please feel free to contact me. My name is Vanessa Murdock. I can be, my contact information can be found on the seattlplanningcommission.seattle.gov website. Any closing thoughts before we move to our next agenda item? All right. Is that a partial hand raise, Michaela? You're muted. All right. Well, thank you all. Stay tuned. This is going to be a process that will continue for anywhere from three to four to five months, depending on what legislation is before the city council. So even though the terms technically end in mid-April, per our bylaws, the seats are, continue to be filled by the commissioners if they are willing, until their seats are filled. So we're looking at a probable midsummer appointment, appointments, I should say. And with that, I will turn it back to David, and just note that Deanna is also suggesting land use law and administrative law in general. So thank you for that. David?
Right. Thanks, Vanessa. So now we'll hear from the Office of Economic Development. We're joined by staffers here who will introduce themselves after we introduce ourselves. We have about 55 minutes for this agenda item, but please, presenters, leave 25 minutes for questions and comments. Following the presentation, I'll facilitate our discussion. Somebody need something? Following the presentation, I will facilitate our discussion. Please note that in the chat function of MS Teams, the topic or issue you wish to address in your comment or question. Staff will assist in monitoring the chat and grouping the comments and questions by topic. So before turning it over to our friends from the Office of Economic Development, we'll go through our own introductions. I'll start and then pass it to fellow commissioners. And after you introduce yourself, please call on someone else to introduce themselves. And I'm David Goldberg. I'm the co-chair of the Commission. Him pronouns. I live in the Wallingford Urban Village, and I work for the Washington Department of Transportation. And I'll pass it to my co-chair, Michaela.
Good morning, everyone. Michaela Daffern, she/her pronouns. I work in affordable housing policy and planning, and I live in Capitol Hill, and I co-chair the Commission with David. And I will call on Deanna.
Good morning. I'm Deanna Quintanar. I use she/her pronouns. I live in Capitol Hill, and I work in multimodal transportation planning. And I'll pass it over to Radhika.
Good morning. I'm Radhika May. I use she/her pronouns. I live in Redwood, and I am an urban planner. I'll pass it on to Zio.
Morning. Zio Alvarez. I use she/they pronouns. I live in White Center Highland Park, and I work for a private architecture firm. I'll pass it to Jamie.
Good morning. I'm Jeannie Struble. I use she/her pronouns, and I work in climate change and environmental justice, and live in the future 130th Station area. And I will pass to-- Looking at who's on this list. Nick?
Good morning. My name is Nick. I live in West Seattle and North Del Ridge. I use he/him pronouns, and for my day job, I am a city planner. I will pass it over to Caleb.
Good morning. My name is Caleb Toolday. He/him pronouns. I live in Central District, and I'm an educator. I'll pass it to Monica.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Monica Sharma. I use she/her pronouns. I live in the Central District, and I work in advocacy and organizing for youth physical activity equity and physical activity play and sport in the city of Seattle and King County. And I can't actually see my list. I think Julio, if you haven't gone yet?
Hello, everyone. My name is Julio Sanchez. My pronouns are he/him. Previously, I was working in the field of community outreach and engagement, but I just got the little piece of paper that says I am an unauthorized grant writer from the Spark the Fire Grant Writing Program. So that's my new endeavor in life. And I don't know who hasn't gone, so if you're out there, claim your voice and say, me, me, me.
This is Andy Danenberg. He/him. Live in northeast Seattle. I work in public health, and I teach at University of Washington. And I can't see who hasn't gone yet.
Rose?
Hey, morning, y'all. Rose Lucilla Whitson, pronouns, they/them. I am, I live up north in the Lakeview Springs neighborhood, and my day job is as a wetland biologist and permitting specialist with Jacobs Engineering. We've gone through most people. Has Radhika, did you already introduce yourself?
I did.
Okay, maybe I was the last one.
You were the last, Rose. So how about, we'll move to staff. Olivia?
Sure. Good morning, everyone. Olivia Baker. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm staff to the Commission.
John?
Good morning. I'm John Hoy. I use he/him pronouns, and I'm staff to the Planning Commission.
Robin McGonigal. I use she/they pronouns. I live on Vashland Island, and I am staff to the Planning Commission.
Thanks, all. Vanessa Murdock. I use she/her pronouns. I live just outside of the Greenwood Finney Urban Village, and I'm Executive Director for the Commission. And now I'll turn it over into OED staff.
Thank you so much, and thank you for giving us some time this morning. We're really happy to be here. Heidi Hall with the Office of Economic Development. I use she/her pronouns. Live in the Central District. I've been at OED almost like nine years. It's crazy. I manage our community wealth building team.
Hey, everyone. Alicia Teo. I'm the Deputy Director at the Office of Economic Development. I use she/her pronouns, and I, she/her like you, I live in Highland Park. So fun to have someone else from the neighborhood here. Okay, so we will definitely not use like the full 55 minutes for our presentation. We'll leave plenty of time for questions, and we'll go through just kind of like some grounding on what our department does and kind of what's guiding us. And then Heidi will talk more in depth about our community wealth building work, which is really exciting work. So to start, we'll lay kind of our grounding framework here, which is that an inclusive economy is a competitive and prosperous economy. And so part of our guiding work is making sure that everyone who lives in Seattle is able to participate in our economy, that we have good jobs of thriving neighborhoods throughout the city. And our goals, so in 2022, we did some community-driven work to really put more of a framework around how we get to this goal. And so that work became our Future of Seattle Economy Framework. And when we started doing this work in partnership with many stakeholders and community, we set out the goals, which were define the future of the Seattle economy, and then chart the path and the strategies that are going to get us there. And so we started by defining some shared priorities. We also identified investments that are required from the city to get there. And the role of OED-- and the role of OED and the city relative to key partners. Economic development, of course, is kind of like a shared activity and it's not just the public sector that does it. And we thought it was really important for our office and for the city in general to just be clear about what the city's role is and the levers that we have when it comes to economic development. And then the result was this community-informed investment agenda that really helps guide the whole city, not just OED, since economic development is not held just by our department, in how we approach this work. And so as you can see here, we developed a framework that has five pillars. These pillars certainly intersect, as you can see from our lovely flower Venn diagram here. And those five key pillars are investing in talent and building our workforce, supporting small businesses and women and minority business enterprises, building BIPOC community wealth. And in that, we have kind of like three key lanes. So that is access to affordable commercial space, that is access to markets. And then I'm blinking on a third place. Access to capital, anxiety. Investing in neighborhood business districts. So this is our placemaking work. And then growing businesses in key industries. We were really excited last year. One of our big priorities was getting this more like embedded in the city as policy. And so the council passed and the mayor concurred with a resolution that sets this Future of Seattle Economy Framework as city policy for economic development. And then we also used this opportunity to talk more about our role, especially during the pandemic. OED was really like thrust into the role of being a responder to businesses and what they needed in the moment. And I think as we did this research and work to think about like, what does the future look like? Yes, that responsive work is still very important. One of the key functions that our office has is kind of as a front door for businesses and we help businesses that are trying to navigate something, connect with the right city department to get their issues taken care of. And we also have kind of longer range roles as well, like about that organize and build, making sure that we are pulling systems together so that the city's work, whether we're talking about internal to the city or the city and partners, is working towards a system that is coordinated and that works. And then also like thinking farther off into the future about what's the vision that we're trying, excuse me, to achieve. And then last but not least, we also work in partnership with other departments, including the Office of Planning and Community Development, who's a close partner to us, the Office of Sustainability and Environment, whom we're working with on some really exciting green jobs, like workforce planning and many others, since we want to make sure that this economic development philosophy is again, not just held in OED, but that really it is a city vision for how we're operating. One specific initiative that I will just mention is the Downtown Activation Plan. This is an initiative that is a top priority for the mayor. It's a top priority for us as well, especially coming out of the pandemic. It's really critical that we keep the economic engine of our city going. And downtown is home to a very high percentage of our jobs. It has a lot of our commercial real estate. And so like a healthy downtown is very critical of cities' like long-term revenue sustainability. And that's part of why we're focused on it. So we rolled out the Downtown Activation Plan last June. It's a plan that has the near-term and midterm, well, not both, but it's got some near-term actions, some midterm, like one to three-year actions, and also some longer range thinking about how we're really re-envisioning downtown as a place that again, is more inclusive, more people feel welcome.
Thank you, Vanessa.
And we've got seven goals in the plan. So making downtown safe and welcoming, that it's a lively residential neighborhood, that it's a forum hall to a wider range of folks, that we're creating a unique downtown ground floor experience. And so especially as the retail environment changes more broadly, how are we making sure that we are being responsive and thinking ahead about the spaces that are needed? Thinking about downtown as a place for work, again, like the percentage of hybrid work that is happening now, like we could not have imagined five years ago. And so what does that mean today? That coming in person can be more of a choice for more people. And so how are we making downtown that attractive choice? Celebrating the many assets we have around arts and culture and sports that already exist here. Keeping downtown a great place to visit. Tourism has been an important economic driver for the city, especially coming out of the pandemic and will continue to be. And then creating a healthy, resilient and green downtown. Making sure the way we're envisioning downtown is compatible with our climate and resiliency objectives. I'm very pleased to share that we've actually made a lot of headway on some of the short-term things, including some legislative accomplishments that might be of particular interest to this commission. So last year, the city passed some rezoning along Third Avenue to increase capacity for residential development. Part of the Downtown Activation Plan also speaks to incentivizing more education happening downtown, which is also one of those exciting ways that we think about like, how are we using space in downtown differently? How are we widening like who downtown is for? We've also simplified permitting. We have temporarily waived permit fees for food trucks and these smaller special events to encourage more of these small festivals downtown. Belltown had come to the city and said like, we are interested in more hotels maybe being possible here. And so that was legislation we passed as well. The King Street Station Cultural Hub, if you have not been there yet, it's super exciting. It opened last fall and we're really excited. It is now hosting five BIPOC-led organizations with a focus on youth art. And again, it's a cool way to bring more people in. Expanded partnerships for parks activation. So making sure that our parks are safe and active places for people and people to visit, especially families with kids. That's one of the groups of folks that we found in our research, like really was not convinced that downtown was for them. Increasing resources for travel and tourism promotion. And I think right at the very end of the year, we're able to pass this master use permit extension, which should also be very helpful in keeping some of those projects that were in the pipeline going. And then as we look forward, I did mention that we were working closely with OPCD. OPCD is working on some legislation related to like the Office to Residential Conversion in partnership with SDCI. And so that's a piece that we see as connected to downtown, whether or not the legislation is like founded by downtown or applies more broadly. And then here are some of the other things that we were able to accomplish last year, which was Google Dispatch Care Team. So kind of a behavioral health complement to the types of first responders that are available. An investment in the Metropolitan Improvement District to really amp up more cleaning. Continued progress on the Downtown SubArea Plan. So our friends over at OPCD. Heidi will talk a little bit more about the Seattle Restored Program, but that is part of like ground floor activation. And we're really excited that as this program has evolved, it is not just about like short-term filling of space, but also thinking about how that's happening in the longer term. We're seeing greater return to office, which is really exciting and it seems like more stable growth, especially throughout 2023. And then not too far at all from here, but the reopening of City Hall Park and that park continuing to be kind of like an active space for people to gather has been really great to see. So with that, as we look forward this year, I wanted to also share with this group like some of the things that we are focused on. So you'll hear more in a moment about innovative commercial affordability and access to capital. Speaking to some of our other pillars, the workforce strategic plan and green jobs plan for the city. This is very high on our list, is having kind of like a city point of view on how we do workforce development, which is currently spread out across a lot of different departments. And so kind of making sure that there's that common vision and strategy for that work. Downtown Activation Plan, which you just heard about, growing the number of business improvement areas across the city. These organizations are really critical to kind of that self-sufficiency piece when it comes to placemaking and making sure that neighborhoods are able to raise resources that they can deploy themselves to kind of supplement the work that the city is already doing. Supporting a robust small business support ecosystem and city navigation, again, so that businesses are able to have that kind of single point of contact with us or if they're encountering any issues. And then last but not least is figuring out the future of special events in the city. So this is another one of OED's functions, is we provide that complex permitting coordination for major events in the city. This is an important piece of kind of how are we making the city a welcoming place? And to date, like this has been more of a like response function for the city. And I think as we go forward, one of my questions on our mind at OED is, is there room for like a more proactive approach to how we encourage these larger scale gatherings? With that, I think that's my piece. And then Heidi, I'll turn it to you for your deep dive.
Great. Thank you so much. So we thought we'd go a little deeper on to some newer work that we've been building out over the last several years around building community wealth, given some of the connections with work around displacement and affordability and whatnot. So I'll dive into that a little bit. I'm going to run through a couple of programs high level and please grab me if anyone has questions during our discussion period or to follow up as well at any point. So we've been building out a new team and some strategies around building community wealth. And for us, we're really working to close racial wealth gaps and interrupt displacement through economic development strategies rooted in community wealth building. And so this approach to and so we're doing this through kind of a couple of key strategies. One around commercial affordability and ownership. So really investing in a business's infrastructure.
I think we lost them for a second. So I just want to make sure. Sometimes audio glitches. And unfortunately, since everyone else is at home. Okay, are we back?
It's back now.
We're back. Okay.
Sorry about that.
No, appreciated.
It's not new. It's the technology.
You never know where to talk on hybrid. So I was just talking about some strategies around building community wealth. First, commercial affordability and ownership. So investing in a business's infrastructure for growth and sustainability and to help businesses stay in their neighborhoods. Second, around access to affordable capital, where we're supporting business ownership and growth, particularly BIPOC businesses who have not had equitable access to capital to generate family wealth. And around culturally responsive business systems, really building business support systems that address systemic barriers and racial discrimination and trying to kind of shorten that road to profitability, to build wealth through business ownership. And then finally, community engagement, neighborhood partnerships. So through all of our work, we're working really closely with our neighborhood business districts and other partners to build programs and learn together. And I'll just, I'm not going to go through all this, but just to kind of let, to ground folks a little bit, a lot of this work, all of this work comes out of more than a decade of neighborhood business district organizing work and deep partnerships with our districts. And we've been with a particular emphasis on what we call our equity districts, looking at the Race and Social Equity Index Map work that's been done through OPCD. We've really been using that as a way to ground kind of the criteria for programs and how we evaluate some of our programs. So from, you know, Commercial Affordability Task Force in 2016 on through some targeted work with BIPOC community partners, community roundtables, advisory groups and whatnot. And so really trying to respond to some of these displacement pressures that are arising from new development. And so I'll come through here. So really focusing on commercial affordability. This has been a big thing that we've been working on probably for the last decade and really communities asking for more tools and resources as developments really increased in their neighborhoods and really wanting more ability to benefit from that and keep businesses in the neighborhood and help them grow and prosper. So we're really focusing on multiple strategies to support businesses at different points in their journey, kind of creating this continuum of commercial affordability programs to support a range of these goals. So I'll kind of walk through these really briefly, but these programs are meeting different city objectives from Seattle Restored, really started downtown to activate vacant storefronts, our business to be ownership funds, looking at long-term stability in our equity districts through ownership. This is a new program. And our tenant improvement program, really emphasizing our neighborhoods and making sure businesses can stay. And that's just a snapshot of where our current investments are. Okay, so I'll quickly touch on Seattle Restored. Alicia mentioned this started as a pilot program through kind of as a pandemic response, economic recovery during the winter of 2022 to fill our city's empty storefronts by supporting small business owners and creative entrepreneurs in the pop-up to long-term lease pipeline. So this commercial affordability strategy is really trying to minimize the upfront investments and risk that vendors take on to test their products. It allows them to learn at lower cost. They get a lot of wraparound services and it gives them just a longer runway to be successful. So these numbers have actually been updated. We've got, I think, 121 participants, 81 activations. And as Alicia mentioned, nine long-term leases have been signed or they are in negotiation from one to three years to keep businesses in those spaces. And this is really where we're taking the program as it evolves. We're in the process now of evolving this. This program's in partnership with Shumpike and Seattle Good Business Network and really keeping some of these activate, these pop-ups, three to six month pop-ups, but also really emphasizing that long-term lease transition. So this is one example, Tasbira down in Pioneer Square, really exciting space. And she's been a really important part of kind of this cohort of small business owners. And some other work that's filling out of this, an important component of this was kind of a matchmaking function that the partners played in terms of connecting businesses with spaces. And so this next year, we'll be doing some work really looking at ground floor and how we expand Seattle Restored out of downtown into some of our neighborhoods. So part of looking at ground floor strategies downtown and then also as we expand it to neighborhoods, what are those kind of retail needs, community needs, and how do we use our commercial affordability tools, things like Seattle Restored to also help address some of those goals? So next I'll touch on is the tenant improvement program. So we had some recovery funds and really ramped up. We've been piloting this again over several years. It really, the concept really emerged from partnership work in Chinatown ID, where there was a lot of new development coming in and businesses couldn't afford to go in those spaces that had been in the neighborhood for a long time. So really focusing on making those initial tenancy costs more affordable for small businesses and investing in that infrastructure to help them grow and expand, you know, stay in their space and grow and expand their business. And so the program provides professional services, permitting support. We have a partnership with SDCI where we do expedited small business permitting and coaching, which has been just fabulous. And then funding awards to fund the build-out or renovation of commercial spaces. This program, we're going to be relaunching kind of a redesigned program in April. And there's a huge demand for this. When we did our initial, I think it was August 2022, where we kind of put out the application, we got 507 applications, 37 million in requests. Like the demand was really, really extensive. And so we've been really thinking about how do we design this program in a way to help businesses where they're at, their journey in that commercial development process. So we'll be rolling out some new program resources there. Just a quick snapshot of what 2023 looked like. We had 37 projects representing 3.4 million in investments. Again, this was this big ramp up. Really strong, there was really strong outreach and a rubric that looked at equity impact viability and readiness. And so really centered, I worked with a few panels. We selected projects, as you can tell, you know, it was a really, a lot of interest. And so 94% are in those high displacement areas identified through the Race and Social Equity Index Map. 97% are BIPOC-owned businesses. 61% are women-owned businesses. And over half speak languages other than English. So we've been really also tapping into our language access resources and tying that into our professional development. And so we're excited to be rolling more work out in this space, probably two Q this year. And then, and I would say with the tenant improvement program as well, the professional services and coaching is just a huge, huge component of that in addition to kind of the actual funding and the construction support. Because most businesses have never done a commercial development project and they will do maybe one in their life. And so there's a lot of support that's needed there.
Well, and Heidi, I mean, it's shaved off like over 100 days, right?
The permitting. Yeah, we just got some data from our SDCI partner, who's been fabulous, just really understands the coaching component of this. And there's been a 30% reduction in the time it takes to get a permit and shave off like 100 days. So like that saves a business owner money. A lot of times they are, you know, some of them are paying rent already. We're really trying to help folks with some advocacy around getting a free rent period while they're doing their TI build-out. But that's been a huge piece. So the last thing I'll touch on is a new model that we're building out and piloting right now. And it's pretty exciting and it's gotten some interest. We're calling it the Business Community Ownership Fund. We worked with some key partners on kind of refining this concept and building this out. It is, so it's a new investment model for ownership of commercial space. It aims, the Business Community Ownership Fund aims to address commercial displacement and empowering small businesses with long-term affordability and ownership of their own commercial spaces to keep them rooted in their neighborhoods or help them return to neighborhoods in some instances when that displacement has happened. It's a partnership with OED and Grow America, which was previously the National Development Council, which folks might be more familiar with, who are matching city funds through financing and grants. So for every city dollar that's put into this program, there's a dollar matched through financing and grants. And I'm going to show you a quick, if technology works, we'll see, I'm going to show you a quick video that we just did to kind of explain how the program works. And then I'll talk through some of the mechanics. I just realized I don't have sound.
Again, it probably is the technology.
You know, I just realized I might not be able to do this.
... He's grown a dedicated customer base. And neighborhood, neighborhood, as new developments have risen around your salon.
Just putting in the chat.
Okay.
Okay, I might send.
Anyway, it's cool animated video. It shows how the fun works. Oh my God. Okay.
Okay.
You just need everybody who's not presenting to mute.
Sorry about that. So I'll send the link out to the video if anyone's interested, but essentially how the fund works is a business owner partners with the Business Community Ownership Fund and forms a real estate partnership or an LLC. And this could be one business, it could be multiple businesses primarily looking at mixed-use buildings and so really focusing on the ground floor. So partnering with the Business Community Ownership Fund. And if there's multiple storefronts, it could be multiple businesses. And then the fund purchases ground floor, commercial space in a mixed-use building in one of our neighborhoods. And the business owners own and control the commercial space as part of the real estate partnership, which then leases the space back to the business. So business owners own the real estate through the partnership. The partnership leases the space back to the business at a below market rate. So businesses also benefit from a community of support with other business owners and access to tools and resources like business financing that promotes their future growth. So we're working with them closely on their business and supporting them through their financials, through business planning and development, all of those pieces, while they also have the stability of ownership in the commercial space. So the way, so rents are then fixed for the full period of the project. So they start at a below market rent and never go up. So the business benefits incredibly from having that stability for the long term. So the lease payments are flat over time. And then it also offers that security from being displaced. So we're actually limiting the appreciation of the real estate with a restrictive covenant to ensure long-term affordability, similar to what we do with affordable housing. And so, and so the wealth building strategy here is really through the small business. We're not looking at the appreciation of the real estate. We're really looking at the small business, allowing them to invest increased income and value into their business and build generational wealth. So here's some, or if we close on our first project, the Maddox at, with, in partnership with Mount Baker Housing Authority in Mount Baker, a small design firm. And, and they've got roots in Rainier Valley. So they actually, I think one of the partners actually went to Franklin High School, which is right next door. And as part of their public benefit, they're going to be doing some community design workshops and offering in-kind services. So there's some really, really full synergies there. We're looking at some other projects right now. We're getting ready to close a project in Central District, in Rainier Beach, and then talking to some projects in Lake City. So this is kind of rolling out, it's new, and we're really excited. Lot of opportunity, a lot of complicated details to work through, of course. And so we're learning a lot as we go, but really hope to scale this up. It's going to be a big focus for us in 2024. And then the last thing I'll just flag on is we're doing a lot of new work around access to affordable capital. And again, the pandemic really in some of the federal economic recovery resources really allowed us to try some things that we have been working on for like a decade and really trying to put in place. And we're kind of ready to put those in place and now looking at growing and sustaining those efforts. So around the access to affordable capital, we, there are really significant racial wealth gaps in terms of access to capital, which really limits a business's ability to grow and even start in the first place. And so we're working to foster equitable access to affordable capital for small businesses owners who have been historically marginalized. Looking at a couple of key strategies run around capital readiness support. So we're launching a new cohort program this year, partnering with five community-based organizations to really kind of co-create and together kind of figure out what are some new program strategies and ways to support businesses to get them ready to access financing, to really understand what financing means for their business. That was one thing we saw through the pandemic was a lot of businesses weren't ready or they got stuck in the pipeline and couldn't access that financing when and where they needed it. We're also looking at some subsidized financial products for businesses. Particularly, we experimented with some kind of capital paydown strategies, which I'll flag on. Our Capital Access Program was one of our recovery response programs. And looking at other ways to kind of make that capital more affordable. And then finally, looking at other barriers to accessing capital through partnerships with different financial institutions and looking at new models. There's some interest in like some community controlled capital models, loan reserve funds, things like that, and really working with our community development financial institution partners. And I'll just kind of just as quick snapshots, we launched the Capital Access Program in 2021. And this leveraged the Washington State Flex Fund Loan, which is a small business recovery loan funded with federal recovery dollars. So they were low interest loans, like 4%, I think it was. And like now, in a current environment that you, you would not see that again. So it was a really, it was an opportunity for businesses to readily access affordable capital, not have to have all the collateral requirements and whatnot. And so we partnered with that and used our funds to provide a 25% paydown for eligible businesses. And so as a result of that, 295 businesses received 6.97 million in awards, which leveraged an additional 27.8 million in affordable financing for small business recovery. And again, you know, 56% were BIPOC owned businesses, 52% were women owned businesses. We partnered with a firm and did some user design research and really found some areas, sorry, that we're using to guide our work moving forward. So this capital readiness was a big piece, you know, communications and things like that, that we're really using as we move forward in this work. So a lot of exciting stuff happening here. And I'll leave it there. And so thank you so much again, just for sharing some of this work. And we're really excited to see where these connections and synergies are. We've been working a lot with our partners at OBCD and DON and OSC and all these other departments, SDCI, and really seeing this as a collective effort, as Alicia was saying.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, you timed that just about as perfectly as you could have. If you'd shown the video, I think you would have ended at the precise moment. And that's what we expect from our economic development people. I, that's, there's a lot packed in there. You guys are working on a lot of stuff. I had this weird feeling like, well, it's a good thing we had COVID because we got all this federal money that we can try these things with that we wouldn't have otherwise had. Of course, we have a lot of additional problems to solve. And while we wait for the queue to fill up here, the, I thought the anti-displacement stuff is super interesting. And I'll just kick off with one question of my own, which is, how many peers are there out there who are doing this, have done, tried these kinds of things? Do you have great examples that you're drawing from of successful, successful efforts in retaining and nurturing BIPOC and other kinds of businesses that you're working with in some of these programs? Who do you look to?
Yeah, that's a good question. There's a lot of folks grappling with this issue. There's actually a new network that launched, the Small Business Anti-Displacement Network out on the East Coast. And they asked us to come talk to them about the Business Community Ownership Fund. So that is fairly unique in terms of its model, its financing model of trying to do one-to-one and that long-term affordability. There's a couple of funds that are, there's one out in DC, you know, city funds, partnership with some others that are looking to acquire commercial condos. So a lot of folks are looking at that acquisition piece. And then a lot of folks have reached out about the Seattle Restore. So there's actually a San Francisco Restore that launched just last year. And then we looked at Motor City Match in Detroit as we were redesigning our tenant improvement and have done some peer exchanges with them in terms of, we just have one lane where folks got grants to build out their commercial spaces. And we found businesses were like here and here and here, they were all over the place. They're trying to push them into one lane. And so a lot of the redesign that you'll see came through some of those peer conversations. So yeah, but a lot of folks are trying to figure this out. And I think with, in high market cities like Seattle, the cost of construction is so high. Like even with the BCOF, we're, we're talking to, we're starting to talk to some philanthropy with our partners at Grow America because that additional subsidy is needed to make, to keep the rent affordable, which is one of the goals that we've got. Yeah. And I'm happy to share some of the links and resources that we've been looking at.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's great. I, I have a, I have a friend who lives in Wales and has a small nonprofit bike shop that, that serves kind of, you know, lower income and people who need good transportation. And they, they're in a, it's basically a development that was put together with shipping containers. I mean, it's in the heart of town. And they're all, there's like all these different like low margin businesses and nonprofits that are taking these, that are be able to use these spaces. I thought that was super creative. I don't, I know that the land is at such a premium here, it would be hard to pull off something like that. But, you know, it's one interesting strategy. We have a question from Michaela.
So first of all, hi Heidi, nice to see you. It's been a long time. I, I really appreciate the presentation. I really appreciate the balance between presenting on what you're doing around downtown versus what you're doing in neighborhoods. I think as a planning commission, we are fans of this 15-minute city concept. And so it's not just our downtowns that need economic development support. It really is our neighborhoods where we live every day and where we, where we exist. So I really appreciate OED's kind of focus on investing in businesses outside of the downtown core. Did want to say that I happened to stumble upon on a weekend during Christmas shopping, one of the pop-up events downtown. And it was so exciting just to see and experience ways that we were activating this, this vacant commercial space. So, and I, you know, there were so many different small like artists who were selling their wares and it was really, really fun. So good feedback on that program. My question's kind of weedy and I know one of the things that OED has struggled with was getting around the prohibitions that we have in Washington state around the gift of public funds. And I'm curious to know if you have produced any like writing that describes how you've gotten around that with some of these credit programs? I'm just, I'm curious how you finally made that work because it sounds like you found a way around it. And can you describe to me at a high level? And if not, do you have a report that I could read?
I really appreciate the question. I, it's funny, when David asked that question, I was, I was like, how much do I dive into gift of public funds? It's been a huge piece that we've been dealing with, as anyone that knows. And when you look at other models, it's so different when you bring it into Seattle because of some of those challenges. So I think with, so we've been working really closely with our law department. And we've been really looking at this concept of public benefit. And so the Business Community Ownership Fund, for example, is providing, and each of the tenant improvement fund projects is providing a public benefit equal to the value of the city investment going into the project. And what we're doing is also including jobs created is kind of a new component that we've been looking at, which is, which is consistent with our federal funding. We also use community development block grant funds, not to get weedy, but it's like the flavor of the funds is actually a big piece of the work that we're doing as we try to braid these different things together. And it's really complicated detail work. So that is what we're doing. We're looking specifically and creating a public benefits obligation is in their contract and then we work really closely with the businesses. And so some of the things we've been looking at, some different categories are jobs created and retained and putting the value on that, using the federal value as a, as a benchmark. Because a lot, again, a lot of these, and that's something we're also looking overall in our programs as a metric around commercial affordability, we're also creating jobs. And other benefits are like in-kind services. I mentioned the La Union Design Service. They're providing 25,000 a year in in-kind free design services for BIPOC small businesses in Seattle. And then they're also providing like workshops and community learning sessions and things like that. The project we're looking at in Central District, there's a public plaza. And so they're looking at programming that as public space that's available to the community. So we've been kind of developing these different categories like that. And then the, you know, kind of reporting on that every year. The other piece, it's a little more challenging, is like the lending of credit. So some of the capital access, we, we had some flexibility with the COVID pandemic response that we've been using through this year because a lot of businesses are still struggling and still recovering. And so that program is very targeted to small BIPOC businesses, those that have been impacted by the economic downturn and are still recovering. Longer term, it's something that we're going to be really thinking about and working on. I don't know if that answered. Any other questions? Do you have anything to add on that?
No, I think you did such a great job.
I, I, I just want to underscore and appreciate the innovation that OED is bringing to trying to figure out how to get around those issues and be creative. Good job, guys.
I will say one thing too. Patty Murray came to visit and she wanted to do, her office did a tour of the Seattle restored things. And we'd mentioned gift of public funds has been kind of challenging and they looked at that and they're like, that's not, that's not gift of public funds issue. They just thought really differently, like that is an activation economic development strategy. And so maybe there's some wiggle in there.
Let's see, Deanna has a question.
Thank you, Heidi and Alicia. It is very exciting to learn all the work that you all are doing to enable prosperity in our city. I had a question specifically, I also said commission, we're stewards of the comprehensive planer about to embark on the review of the comprehensive, comprehensive plan update. As Michaela mentioned, we are keenly focused on understanding how this plan enables the concept of the 15-minute city, even if it's not coined in that fashion, but basically creating a polycentric city that brings access to opportunity, all kinds of opportunity and, you know, densifies the city throughout, just rather than concentrating it. It has many benefits from transportation planning perspective and just understanding the new disruption trends that the pandemic has created with regards to remote working, so many elements. And so a key component to that, and as we're evaluating, or as we will be evaluating the growth strategy that will be selected, key component to that is of course, you know, access to various services and businesses where people live and where growth is happening. And I was curious, you know, it's maybe a two-part question. A, what would you highlight or emphasize the commission focuses in terms of advocating for comprehensive plan strategies and language that can bolster your work and your vision, which I completely support. I think it's the right vision that what OED has in mind in terms of the progress of economic development for the city. And two, to me comes to mind, access to food. And supermarkets and those kinds of things don't tend to have so much typically a need to be supported, but but, uh, encouraging access to food and around the new growth centers is going to be critical and important markets and those kinds of things. And I'm not sure how much work OED does around, uh, markets and supermarkets and, um, uh, farmers markets and those kinds of things, uh, to identify, you know, is, is that being incorporated into your efforts and/or the guidance that perhaps, um, you're providing to OPCD to encourage that. And, um, and I guess I'm rambling now because there's so many thoughts around that, that is so exciting. Um, but I am curious if you weighed in at all into, um, the growth, uh, you know, center strategy that is being proposed in the comprehensive plan with regards to OED's objectives. So that was like a fourth part question maybe. So whatever of that you can answer, uh, I'd be very appreciative.
No, that's a, that's a great question. Um, and unlike Heidi, I'm newer to OED. So I started in June of last year. So I don't, I don't know if we submitted like a formal comment letter on the comprehensive plan. But, um, I would say like, I think that our placemaking strategy that, um, our capacity building team works on is extremely compatible, I would say, with the, like, the underlying, um, I think philosophy of the importance of vibrant neighborhoods that are providing like a mix of services within the neighborhood, that, um, those things are reflective of what the community wants and needs. I think that is, that is all extremely compatible. Um, the retail ground floor studies that Heidi mentioned, I mean, to me, I think that again feels like work that is lining up. And so the goal with those ground floor studies is, uh, both collecting data about like what, what is here, like in terms of like, are there gaps and what types of services are in a neighborhood? What's the population that like we reasonably are expecting to be kind of like walking and coming into this area? So like, what's the potential, I guess? Um, and then like also thinking about, especially as, as retail changes, what else does the community need? And then I think for the planning commission and the comprehensive plan, I think one of the big questions seems to be, okay, if we want to use space differently, is the city set up to help make that happen in a way that is like attainable? I think one of the things that I learned while, while this, we were diving into the study is, you can have a space, um, in a neighborhood that's like, oh, that would be great for a restaurant, but it wasn't current setup that way. And then like, to make it into a restaurant, to have like the range hit or whatever, to do that, you have to like tunnel. And so that's not going to be like, that's not feasible for a business, even if we, if we want certain uses in a neighborhood, like sometimes the buildings are not supporting that. Or maybe there's like permitting or other regulatory barriers that are going to make that really hard. And so I think that even if that is not like written into the comprehensive, but like, it has to be, I think, part of the underlying consideration is that a, as we lay out the vision for what, how we want neighborhoods to be flexible, to be dynamic, to be responsive to community, how is the city also setting itself up to enable all of that? Um, and then to your question about, oh, go ahead.
No, no, go, I didn't, I didn't know you weren't finished. Go ahead.
And then this access to food question, I think is also, it's a good one. Um, and, and I think still TBD, I think part of that will come up in our, our retail studies, which will be both in like downtown and, and further out. And there's amenity conversation, I mean, especially like with the closure of PCC downtown. I mean, that's, that was a big question of if we want downtown to be a vibrant residential neighborhood and yet we have like Wadimaya, we have H Mart, and then we have Whole Foods in South Lake Union and not a whole lot more like that, that feels very challenging and kind of how are we thinking about childcare pharmacies, grocery stores, et cetera, in downtown and throughout the city?
Yeah, and I'll just add one thing, the, kind of that ground floor analysis piece that Alicia was talking about, it really ties in with the placemaking too, because that capacity in the neighborhoods to really organize and be a partner in that and drive it is going to be a really important component as that rolls out in the neighborhoods, right? I mean, otherwise it's just a piece of paper. And so that really being an organizing tool for the neighborhoods to, to have some say and be able to drive some of that. Um, and then the, oh, there's one more thing I was going to say, nice blank. Um, oh yeah, and then the sequencing of some of this, sometimes we get pulled in very late and it's very challenging at that point. So we really appreciate being, even though sometimes we may not know exactly how we fit in and some of those long, you know, these long-term planning conversations, um, figuring out when the right place and time is to bring some of those perspectives, um, I think is, is helpful. Like we're talking right now with the Office of Housing to really think about, there's a lot of affordable housing developments going out and really thinking about how we can ask some of those questions and think about neighborhood needs at particular nodes or commercial corridors. How can those ground floor spaces be set up to be successful? Um, because we're really seeing some challenges right now, even with the Ownership Fund, trying to invest in a project in Rainier Beach, and we can't make it work for a restaurant. So it's, you know, it's like examples like that. So if we get in early and can even just ask some of those questions around, hey, these are some of the things that seem like they're good uses by the market and the neighborhood. And, you know, what's the right timing to just even come in, knowing that there might be some of these? And then we can layer in our commercial affordability investments at the right time and place.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it seems like it's really vital that we keep this line of communication between us open because we can advocate for changes to the future land use map that says, yes, you can do this or that with, you know, terms of commercial use, et cetera. But there's all these underlying code and compliance and other issues that we don't know to advocate for or to raise up as issues. Um, and so people like you can really help us hone in on that. Um, Andy has a comment.
Yeah, hi. On regulation, um, I've heard it from a lot of developers and builders and things, just lots of permits and regulations that, that just make it hard to do much, uh, building and development here. Uh, to what extent, and first I prefaced it, I think you did, you're doing great work. I, I really appreciate your, your conversation. To what extent are you getting that feedback from the developers and builders on what kinds of rules are their biggest barriers? And whether some of those barriers might be lessened or somehow ameliorated or waived, um, when, when you want to see something go forward?
That's a good question. Um, I, you know, I don't know enough to, to say specifically, you know, these things. I, you know, we do hear that it's hard, you know, it's expensive to develop in Seattle. And you hear that from affordable housing developers, commercial developers. Um, and so, you know, I know the permitting timeline has been a challenge. And so that's where that expedited permitting partnership with SDCI has been a real important piece as we're doing the commercial affordability work. Yeah, I'd have to look into, I know there's a, the subcabinet on housing is looking at some of these issues as well. So there might be some more specific, um, things that they could point to there.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm thinking, you know, could you actually survey some of the builders and developers and just find a list of what they consider their biggest barriers? So you could decide which ones to, you know, try to do something with?
Yeah, yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Um, let's see, we have one more question and then we need, at 8:55, we need to wrap that up because we do have one public comment. So we're going to go to Radica.
Um, I don't actually know if this is a three-minute, well, I know it's not, but, um, can you talk a bit about the public safety, um, concerns that were raised during the DAP process and how, um, OED is responding?
Sure. Yeah. And so, uh, the public safety concerns that were raised, I mean, I do think that, um, it, it's very connected to the quality of life issues, right? That I think, um, all of us are pretty familiar with. And so, um, having lots, lots of folks experiencing homelessness, I think, came up in that public safety lane. I think also this question of like response times also came up in that public safety lane. And, um, I think to your question, Radica, of like, what is OED doing? I mean, I, I think another piece that came up is also like some of the environmental stuff that is there, which is like when there are lots of vacant storefronts and when like places are not well lit, like that also is, is a piece of public safety. And also, um, as we think about like activating our parks and having, having public spaces that feel safe. And so OED's work, I would say, is more kind of like that, that third lane of work. And then, um, we of course have constantly, I think, are, are communicating as businesses are raising like public safety concerns with Mayor's Office and with others just to make sure that they're blocking that. But, um, since a, a lot of that direct service is not within OED's realm, what we have been focused on is like, how, how are we making places safer, more activated? Um, we've been working in partnership with parks on, on thinking about how are we adding more lighting to various public spaces downtown? Um, and then again, also working with parks on, uh, making sure that, that the parks downtown, uh, are activated and, and friendly welcoming.
Great. Thank you.
Too, when the Seattle restored strategy is really thinking about a clustered approach also, so that we don't have like just one-off activations like up on their own and really trying to like bring foot traffic in so that you get more activity, you know, in particular nodes. That was not necessarily tied to safety, but just one strategy that folks were thinking about.
Yeah, um, thank you. Thank you for your work. I think the innovation, um, on display was really interesting and exciting. Um, I, I just wanted to mention that, uh, when we have worked downtown, um, some of the concerns around safety that we've heard are also from people who are experiencing homelessness, that they are the ones who feel the most unsafe. So, um, I think thinking through how there can be some innovation, um, in the response to public safety and who exactly feels unsafe and safety for whom, uh, would be great.
Thank you, Radica.
Yeah, and I want to thank you again for coming to speak with us. It's been super interesting. And I would love to have further exchanges in the future. So you're doing some really interesting and, and cool work. Um, so now we're going to shift to public comment. Um, the commission provides time for public comment at all our meetings, but a reminder that we don't hold public hearings because we're not an advisory, we are only an advisory body. We don't make policy and decisions. We, we make recommendations to the elected leaders who in turn make the actual decisions. Individuals who make comments to the commission should remember that the mayor and city council do make those decisions. We encourage individuals and organizations to provide their comments to elected officials. I invite the, the, our public comment to, uh, make the comment now and please keep your comments to two minutes.
Thank you, David. I'll go ahead and leave the public comment, um, that was emailed, um, early this morning, a little bit after midnight. Hello, SPC. I'm interested in upzoning our family home that borders an urban village to allow four townhomes to provide housing for ourselves and affordable housing in our neighborhood. I'm writing on behalf of my family. We are a black immigrant family that has lived in North Seattle for almost 40 years. We have attended councils, city zoning, and reached out directly to SDCI, our representative OPCD, and submitted public comments. The One Seattle Plan public communication frequently emphasizes elevating the voices and empowering historically underrepresented communities, specifically calling to support black voices. This has not been our experience nor many of our community members. There has been no progress. We have been discouraged from applying directly for an upzone, told to wait for the One Seattle Plan and HB 1110, attend listening sessions and redirected to the same people many times. We would like a clear, accessible path for upzoning our neighborhood, transparency on Seattle and HB 1110, and support to upzone our home. Thank you, Abi. Abnet enalem. And that concludes the public comment that I've received.
Thank you, Vanessa. And I think that concludes our business for today. Are there any, anything to, to wrap up with Vanessa?
Nope, that's it.
Great. Thanks, everybody. What's that?
Just to thank our presenters and thank you all.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that was great. Okay, and I guess with that, we are adjourned.
Bye.
Bye all.
Bye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.